... Board of Education meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, let's move to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Under President, I make a motion we approve the agenda with the following amendment: Additional certified classified personnel actions, item three, add item G3 facility use agreement between USD 557 and Garden City Communication, Garden City Community College Information Room. And then, item three is add item F2 early childhood programs.
Is there a second? Second in the session. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, say a sign. We're shaking. At this point, we'll move to the public comments section. Mr. Casilius, I think you had a comment for the board?
Yep. I'll just make a quick, uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Uh, it's been a big day. I wish I had my iPad, but it's been such a big day, the batteries are dead. Uh, I just wanted to come at the end of the year as a teacher at the high school and say thank you. Thank you for passing the bill, the referendum, the policy to give us iPads at the high school. It has made my job as a teacher extraordinary and helped me really reach a lot more students. I was gonna give you examples of all the cool stuff, but I know I only got five minutes, so I'm gonna be inspired this way. Uh, recently, I had a field trip by US history students, we're living in the Civil Rights era. And I took my three US history classes downtown and we learned about segregation. Uh, we'd been learning about it in the nineteen sixties. Uh, we took my students downtown and we learned about it at five different locations downtown here in Garden City. Uh, at each location, I had a, had created an iMovie and I had a MacBook. I thought I was gonna make this all this sweet movie and it turns out it was way better for me to make it from scratch. On my iPad, five movies from scratch, then using my MacBook and messing around with the computer. Uh, I had a laptop at each station. Uh, students came in on their iPads, they grabbed their iPads with them and there were questions. There was maybe a five or ten minute movie. Uh, they talked about segregation, segregation in the past, segregation here in Garden. Uh, they answered a couple of questions. Then there was a lot, a little activity for them to do. They were at each station for maybe twenty minutes. Uh, they visited a traditional soda shop and learned about lunchtime or sit-ins at a true lunchtime that's been here since almost the beginning. Uh, they had little questions and they would take a picture. Uh, they would find like a little trivia hunt. And there's so many cool things at the traditional soda shop and they had to find these things and answer a couple of questions for each one. They went to the big pool and learned about segregation at the big pool here in Garden City. That back in the day, today they take for granted that they can go and swim with their friends. It has not always been that way. And they went through a live movie and just luckily we got there before they filled it. So they got to go in the big pool and feel it, be at the bottom and learn about how they dug that big pool by hand. How the sides would have sloped because it was a clean dug pool and concrete came later. That the little ditch that runs through the zoo in the park, I never understood why that thing is there. It was to drain the pool back in the day before they had a filtration system. And they learned, uh, from news articles from The Telegram about the process in fixing the problems and the community coming together and allowing everybody to swim at the big pool. Uh, the police department showed up and they learned about canines and their use during the nineteen sixties and their use today. Uh, they watched movies and learned about the marches in Birmingham and they used fire hoses against demonstrators. And the fire department showed up and showed them the force of the hose in the park and let the kids actually run the hose, which was blew my mind out so cool. Uh, that, 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 and they went to the downtown state theater and learned about how back in during segregation times, if you were colored, you had to sit in the balcony. So they sat in the balcony, they sat on the floor. And at the end, the highlight was they brought in a guest speaker, Terrence Roberts from Little Rock Nine. He came to Garden City, spoke to those students in the theater about his experience desegregating schools in Little Rock, Arkansas. He later came back to the high school. Blows my mind, blows me away, all because of iPads. Without iPad, I would not have been able to make the amazing field trip possible. So I thank you.
Oh, don't leave, don't leave. Question. You know I'm gonna have a comment. I admire your passion for education and learning and your students and I think it's commendable. How can we get your colleagues as passionate about this tool as you are? Any tips for us?
I, I think it's just self-explanatory, like it's just right there. Anything I can do on paper, I can do on iPad. It, they, they've made movies in class, they've made keynotes in class. Uh, back to the old days, I have like a PowerPoint and I show notes. Uh, in my world history class, I visited lots of the places that I'm talking about. And I would show really cool pictures of all these cool places and once I go to the next slide, it's gone. Uh, now, I put their, I put pictures and notes on the backpack and they now have a color image copy on their iPad. Uh, while we're going through notes, uh, I can doodle and draw it and they do the same and it saves. Uh, everything that I do, I save on the backpack, so if students are absent, uh, all our lessons are alphabetized, they're all in the backpack. There's an explanation, there's a copy of everything. Uh, I heard that on some of the activity buses, they have hotspots where on the way on their five hour journey to a swim meet, to a softball game, to a soccer game, they can access the backpack, do the work. They're just parents.
I would just love to have teachers like you teach the teachers how to, how to tap into this resource and to be more comfortable with it. I know that we have a spectrum of teachers like yourself and teachers that just really are, are not real comfortable with this tool. And it would, I would love to get everybody closer to being on the same page. I don't know if there's something we can do.
We did, like we have our PLC meetings now. Uh, there were some meetings where we got together and teachers would find some cool apps, some cool websites. And they would say, hey, go to this website, go here and just helps us out, know what else is there that we can use. There's a bajillion apps out there and it just helps if there's a lot more people looking and then just different teachers can let each other know. During our meetings, like maybe once a month or something, say, hey, everybody try to find something and bring it to the meeting.
One last question. Do you have a, a issue or a concerted inappropriate use in your classroom with this technology?
Not really, like they, I try to just keep them active and they're just going, they got lots to work on, like downtime is when they might be distracted to do anything else. Uh, I really haven't had a lot, like maybe here and there, but as soon as I just bring it to their attention, I know that they're doing whatever they're not supposed to be doing, they're right on, right away, they don't want me taking away because they just...
And you feel empowered to do that.
Yeah, yeah, like they know if I catch them, like I can take the iPad away, I give the iPad a little timeout. Uh, obviously there's too much time together and they understand that and like it just breaks their heart and it just, they, they don't like it at all.
How long did it take before the students started showing you some cool apps? And different ways of getting the information?
Say that again?
I said, how long did it take before the students started feeling comfortable to show you some cool apps? And then also easier ways to get to the information?
Uh, one student, because I play music in my classroom, like during the passing period. And one student brought in an app that recognizes music and does like a song search. And walked over to my speaker, I'm playing like classical music during my AP repertory class. And it was able to tell me Beethoven's "C Concerto," like they knew the title. How was that even, there's not even words and it knew what it was. So they just kind of bring them in and so the first ones, like you just see them in the hallway, like, and it's all just a wave. Uh, the Sharks game was a big crave for a little while, like as soon as one kid finds a game, everybody has the game. And everybody plays it and then they all get done with it and they just go on to the next one. But there's a million of them now, so it's awesome.
I just wanted to, to sort of get your impression. It seems to me that for a lot of staff members, having access to that amount of technology that an iPad is capable of is really a sea change in how you're, you're, you're able to teach and it will take some time. But have you noticed over the course of the year that there is more instructor buy-in to utilizing the technology?
I think so. I think in the beginning, there was some hesitation just because it was moving into a new school, game on, here we go, it's all brand new. And here's a cool iPad and it's new to all the students too. Uh, but the students were quick, right away to jump on board and they would just catch it friendly. Uh, the teachers, uh, I think it just depends on the teacher, a lot of them really jumped in. Uh, some kind of like tiptoeing the, the shell of the pool. And then, once they get more comfortable with the backpack, with different apps that we have, I guess it's been really beneficial, a lot more have jumped on.
Well, that's great, because I think that now that we have summer approaching, it'll give a lot of staff members the time to really look at things with a little piece of quiet and really get a greater understanding of how they can use it in their own classroom. So it's pretty exciting listening to, to how you've been able to use it in your class. Thank you for coming and talking to us.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to, I know everybody's, the news of the day is still trickling in that everybody's homes and cars have more of left on them. It's obviously going through a major crisis right now. A huge tornado went through and damaged two schools. And hopefully their crisis plan and emergency plan, uh, they had time to put it in effect and I believe the students are safe. I heard one account that all the students from one of the schools were accounted for. I don't know if they're all okay, but they're all accounted for, so. But it looks at the pictures on the news, five o'clock news, it looks incredibly devastated. A huge area, a mile wide tornado went through, so, um, for sure, we need to keep the students and their families in our prayers with the whole community.
Moving on to Garden City High School Gates Millennium Scholar, Mr. Allen.
And I do want, uh, we, just, we had a, we had a drill today at two o'clock. It was kind of different and it took us ten minutes to get all two thousand students within shelter. I want to get better at this too. Alright, uh, I have someone to introduce to you today, this is Jose Alcatar. And he is the fifth student in a row, five in a row from Garden City High School to win the Gates Millennium Scholar. Uh, there were a thousand students that have received this, there were over fifty-four thousand students who applied. So I'm gonna let him tell you rest of about the many of questions. And don't forget to introduce him.
My, here's my major support, my mom, Truce Alcatar. Couldn't be never good without her. But, um, obviously, like you said, I'm Gates Millennium Scholar, I'm blessed to be where I am. Um, I don't know really where to start, but I don't know, I guess, I guess it's a dream come true, I guess you could say. Because I mean, I get to go to the school where I want to go, you know? I mean, I don't know how to explain it, but I guess it's better for me to ask different questions.
What is the Gates Millennium Scholar?
What's that?
What is Gates Millennium?
Uh, it's, you know, Bill Gates, uh, he, the foundation, he founded in nineteen ninety-nine, if I'm correct. And he said, it's like, I think there's enough money to, uh, let's say, fund for about fifteen more years of scholarships. And it's just like, he gave up, I think it was like a billion dollars to, to help the foundation to, for Hispanics and minorities to support and to fund through his college.
Is there any different, uh, particular area of college you're trying to go to or major?
Uh, yeah, I'm planning to double major in international business and entrepreneurship at University of Oklahoma. And...
It's like football. What does that shirt say? We'll talk about football season.
I'm season ticket Toby there. I don't know, I mean, as far as been the school of my dreams, ever since I was little, I mean, I'm from Oklahoma. And I don't know why, I mean, actually, I went there for screen break, we, ETS, and I just went to the campus and just knew where I wanted to be. And if I didn't get the fastest scholarship, I would've ended up at KU and actually had a full ride to go to KU as well. But, so, either way, I just, you know, I was pretty ready for college and determined to be successful in life.
What was involved with the application process for the scholarship?
There was nine one thousand word essays. Um, countless of no sleep nights, uh, just writing, you know, editing, um, have leadership, uh, you're kind of like a resume. You have, what your roles of a leadership were, have, you know, like if you're like president of some club or, yeah, various community service hours. Gates Millennium Scholarship is like, they don't, I mean, there's, there can be people with four point oh and thirty-six ACT scores, but that isn't when you're gonna get it if you're, if you don't have a background of, you know, of what you, like, of what they're looking for. Because obviously, I'm not, I mean, I was, you know, outstanding student, but they're, I'm not one of the four point oh people, unfortunately. And I mean, they just, I guess that it's determined on your background and how they see you coming from, like, how determined you are to be successful in life. Depending on, uh, candidate.
They were, we agree.
Also, I think that you start in Garden City district.
I started in kindergarten, I think.
So you have come all the way through the Garden City school district. You have done remarkably well and we are so proud of you.
I'd like to thank you. I mean, obviously, without the staff, you know, with everyone, without them, you know, I wouldn't be where I am today with my education, you know? I mean, people, you know, might be complaining about Garden City not much to do, but man, we got great schools here and great staff, so.
And our study.
Jose, you might explain ETS.
Uh, education, time of search. Um, that is where I got most of my life skills, a lot, a lot of my life skills because my mom, you know, busy mom, you know, working for jobs, you know? Trying to get the best life I can. And after the sixth grade, I was, I was able to be a part of that program. And it's a, it's a program for students to be in that kind of helps you get through, like, people that, people that aren't planning to go to college. They help you or they want to go to college, but they can't get there. They're, they help you guide, they help guide you to get there and like they just give you the assistance, they give you the tools. I mean, they give you many various things you, you can wish of, you know? I mean, they, they actually gave us the tour, I went to OU, I went to OSU, and I went to UT. And it was all paid for, I mean, I mean, you can't really ask for more unless, I mean, obviously, you have to write like an essay, you know, why you want to go and they pick. But, I mean, it's a great service to be in if you're planning to go to college, but you really don't have the support and push to get there. I mean, they'll give you that extra push.
We're so proud of you and we're very pleased that, that our school district is able to produce students who are competitive on this level as you are. So I think it speaks well of you and it speaks well of all the hard work of all of our staff members over the years.
How many, how many kids in Garden City community?
In Garden City? I don't remember having a...
There was quite a few. I, I know for a fact there was at least ten others that, uh, that, actually, I thought they had a chance too, but I was the only one that actually made it to the second round. And that, it's crazy that I got to, you know, finally.
I think next year, Bill Gates could come and please give us a word. Five in a row, going on six next year? Oh, yeah, yeah.
We brought the wrong tablet.
All education is good education. Well, congratulations.
Alright, thank you so much.
Now give one to your mom, I think she deserves it.
Did you speak English? Did you speak English?
T-A-R? That is easy. Thanks. Thank you.
He has to be at work like it.
Thank you. Our, our next presentation is by the students that participated in the KU Med Center, the Area Health Education Program, not at the lab.
I'm just sorry to be so unhelpful.
While we're waiting here for getting the technology all in place, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to, to the board and our community, our new chief financial officer for the district, KJ Laker, is coming to us from Wichita. She's hit the ground running. Uh, we will have Kathy Whitley with us up till July and she'll be off for sixty days and still will be available for KJ for support as she makes her transition into this job. Please welcome KJ to our administrative team.
I'll begin by telling you that, um, these are our students that, as you know, that went to our night of the lab for KU Med Center. We had, um, three groups that won, um, out of all of our students that participated. And they, um, KU had a grant, um, and it was through their area health education program. And they paid for our trip up there and our overnight stay at a motel that was just beside, um, KU Med Center and beside the med school. And I'll flip through the PowerPoint, I took pictures on the way, um, all over there, and I'll let the students tell you about it. The first thing is the med center. Um, the students attending were Austin Greathouse, Freddie Jimenez, Zuliu Juarez, um, Tanya Carmona, Laura Richmeyer, Luisia Rivas, Ricardo Socera, and Marcus Zapata. And with us today, we have Austin Greathouse and Zuliu Juarez and Tiana Carmona. This was them at the bottom of the stairs at the hotel just before we were eating. They were starving. They looked pretty skinny, they were hungry, so. Um, the first presentation, um, they, we went and set up in the atrium of the nursing school, um, at the bottom. And Freddie and Ricardo and Laura set up their presentation. Their presentation was over lung capacity comparisons of athletes and non-athletes. Um, this was their presentation and their board, I believe their board, um, we don't have their board up, but we do. We were there, um, we were supposed to be there for about an hour. We ended up being there for over an hour and a half. We had so much, so many faculty, staff, and students that came through. And they listened to their, um, presentation and then they asked them questions. It was very interesting, the comments that we got off of them. I had at minimum five people come up and ask me, are they, they're juniors and seniors? It's just that they said, we are so pleased that you're juniors and seniors that did this. And it was like, no, they're sophomores and juniors. And they were, oh my gosh. Um, one of the ladies commented that the boards that, that, um, our students presented were as good or better than what the college students presented to them. It was, we were very impressed and pleased with our students. Tanya, I'll let you explain yours.
Okay. I did mine on cholesterol and I named it the Silent Color. Uh, we did it on like this, what kind of, the types of cholesterol and where it came from. And I had a lot of questions come to me and it was really different than the presentation I did at Garden City High School. Because at KU Med, they, everyone knew what they were talking about. They all knew about medical and stuff. And so, you had to know what you were talking about. And that's when you knew how well you did on your presentation. As, at the Garden City High School, there was about two or three that knew what they were talking about and it wasn't so very cracking. But it was a really good experience.
Marcus Zapata and Zuliu and Austin presented on the effects of caffeine.
Okay, ours were just like what caffeine is and how it affects you. And so, um, basically, we, like, we did, here's our board, we just did like benefits and like, you know, the drawbacks from having caffeine. Majority of the time, it is beneficial, you have to really overconsume to overdose. And then, my dad teaches health at the college, so I performed a test on one of his classes. And so, just to see if in real life, you know, you can look at all this information online and see what other people do, but actually going and performing tests on real people and doing the same thing, you know? They all, they all really loved that, that we actually went out and did something.
They were very impressed with their research. Um, the first group, Laura's group, also did research on lung capacity. And they were very pleased with the amount of research that they did. Um, we were surprised and didn't realize, but the vice chancellor, Dr. Rodd, was there. Um, we were, everybody kept telling us, um, he's here. And we were like, oh, that's nice. And then they told us who he was and it was very nice. We didn't tell the students who he was until after we were done. Um, and he did go around and ask questions and listen to each presentation also. Um, we got to also take a tour after, of several of the facilities on campus. Um, one of the facilities we weren't supposed to get to go into, and it was a research facility and you had to have a car to go in and a car to go in the elevator and only certain people could go in. And then, there were two people that were standing beside us that said, oh, we have never been in there before. And he asked if we were gonna get to tour Hennway and we said no, that we didn't have time and then they didn't set us up. And he said, I think if you came all the way across the state, they usually get to tour that, so we got to do. Um, Hope Lung Brain Center was one of the first places we went to. And they did research, some of their research in machines that we, uh, we couldn't take pictures of because of privacy rules and stuff and with HIPAA. But this was one of the guys, they had two people talk to us about research that were, um, college students. Um, this kid was doing his graduate, um, work. And he was just getting started on his graduate work. Um, another lady had finished research on, um, uh, hers was on exercise effects on, on fetus, on a fetus. And it was very, very interesting. They had an MRI machine and I'm trying to think what it was. Yeah, there was one that, uh, that did an MRI over the mom and it was very impressive. They, there were two of those in the, in the United States, one of them at the University of Arkansas.
Strong enough imaging machine to give the image of the child inside the mom and how the child's brain reacted to what the mom did.
Yeah, and they did research, like, um, they, the mother would read to the baby while they were there and they watched the reaction of it. And then they, they, um, did research on, on the amount of exercise that the mother did and how that affected the growth of the child. So it was very interesting. Um, the Clendening Library, we got to tour it yet and there were, it, it was mind-boggling. And I can't imagine how mind-boggling it was for the students. Um, one of you guys want to tell them about it?
The library, they showed us about, um, how old the books were, like, of these back then. And like in the B C. We touched a book that was from, it was five hundred years old and it's in great condition. It was just amazing, just touching it. It felt like if we were to pay a dollar bill. Um, we... Oh, yeah, we found a Roman medical kit, uh, how we used to make it much easier. Um, we like saw so many things that were used back then that I never imagined I would be able to see them because I thought they, they didn't exist now.
Yeah, the book, it was from like fifteen to forty something. And it was like, um, either it was for Vesalius or like his...
Yes, it was his.
It was Vesalius' original book. So like they had like the famous statue of like the castle man or something. And like all these, they should portray how the muscles are on the body. And it was like, it looked just like the pictures I see in my class now. Like it was the same, everything they do, all that. And they had an original piece of paper from Woolley Pasture that he signed. And then they had, um, von Leyen Hook looked at his microscope and saw the cells, like his original drawing of like when he first discovered him. Right, like, right there, like we gotta like, like add it to his hands.
The picture up in the corner was a king's proclamation. Um, he used to, um, the king would go lay hands on you. And because he was king, he was ordained by God to heal. And if he healed you, they also gave you, there's a, a small dot at the bottom. That was a coin, um, that you, that you could carry. And if you were healed, then, um, the king, of course, was a hero. And if you weren't healed, it was because you didn't believe. And so they talked about, they talked about the difference and the, and the changes in that and as to what we do.
I'm trying to think what else was there. The dolls.
Oh, yeah, the two dolls. What about those, Tanya?
Uh, yeah, so there's a doll, there's a Beemaw doll. And like, you actually got to open it up and you got in it like more deeper than you actually see right there. Like you could get the parts out. It was kind of like a puzzle. But there was like every single, like, part in your body. And it was... They were, they were, yeah, they were made at KU.
And they were German, weren't they?
Yeah.
The next place we stopped was the School of Nursing Skills Lab.
All right. They just have all these like mannequins that, I mean, this guy could do everything. He could talk, breathe, his stomach wriggled. You could take his pulse, draw blood, give him IVs. They could have him go into like heart attacks or, you know. Then, uh, basically they were showing us what they could do and how they're doing simulations. And this guy, actually, they were making him look like he'd been in a car wreck. He was on the passenger side. So he had the seatbelt marks and he had a dash. And he hit his head on the dashboard. And they were gonna have the, um, trauma kits come in and have a simulation of it. And then, uh, we took our own pulses with the ultrasound and to see what it sounded like when they used to. It was pretty fun.
This was the research facility that we went to, it was Henningway. So, um, the pictures that, that you see up there are, they had a 3D printer. And our kids were like, "Ah." And we were like, "No way." Um, and the skull that he has in his hand was actually made from the 3D printer. It lays down, um, the image from the MRI or whatever machine that they, that will take a 3D image. And, and it lays down a layer of, um, glue and then a layer of powder. And that's what it builds for you. So they use that if they want to show someone what they're gonna do. They, um, this person, I believe, was having, uh, reconstructive surgery. And so they were showing him what they were gonna do to his cranium. So it was very impressive.
I was impressed by how like the supplies they used was cheap. Like it wasn't that much.
Yeah, it's a print, and they, uh, they had printed a, a C1 vertebra. And they said that it was like twelve dollars to print, that's all it was. And it wasn't take that long for you to print. Do you guys have any questions?
Which academy is this at?
Well, this would be the same academy that Adam was in. It would be the Health Science Academy.
Let me make sure we're...
I know we're excited and I'm already ready for this.
There's a bit of pride going on there.
Yeah, a little bit.
Are you students, are you planning to go into healthcare?
Yeah.
I mean, you didn't hesitate there at all. Especially after this opportunity.
I'm a neurosurgeon. And I found it really cool because at KU Med, there's a, a lot of like brain research. I think I saw, and like a lot of stuff that was based on like the brain and neurology. And it was pretty cool. And I got to see a real brain. Yeah, and there was a student there that was kind of freaked out. And I found it like as kind of like my first test if I really wanted to like do surgery on her brain. Yeah.
You're like, "Let me ask."
Um, I wanna be a medical examiner or a physical therapist. I suppose they send you from those two, but the difference in human physics. Austin, how about you?
I wanna go into hospital.
Yes.
You know, going in. I think one of the biggest things, we, we talked to some kids that went to medical school that, and one of them was from Garden and one was from Great Bend. And they said, uh, the biggest things they liked about our high school, when we told them about the iPads, they thought that was the most amazing thing ever. They liked the academy systems. They thought it was great to be surrounded by people that had similar interests that you did. And they said that that's what you need to do when you're oncologist, surround yourself with people that are gonna push you, uh, you know, make you want to go to party. And then they said that, um, the only thing they didn't like was they wished they had taken finals. Because they didn't know how to take finals at college.
You know, and that, our policy's changing on that. This is the last year that we have the exemption policy in place. But I'm getting a confirmation from Mr. Morales. So I'm very happy about that because I talked to a lot of students that come back and the first thing they say when I ask them was, "Were you prepared for college?" Or wherever you were at. And the first thing they say is, "I did not know how to study for KU with a final." And so we're listening and getting feedback and we're gonna fix that. So, so that's good, good information. Congratulations and good luck with your career plans and keep working hard.
This is a great program. Are we, um, anticipating we might be able to do this again next year?
We do. Um, we are, and they're, they're going to take it. We will pilot the program so they're gonna take it to other schools next year. So we'll have to compete with other schools. We won't be able to take three groups next year. I think we'll only be able to take one, so, um, but we will go again. Yes, hopefully we'll get together again, so.
They, they plan on taking people from four regions of Kansas. So we'll take four regional winners. And they will go to KU Med and they'll actually compete there. And, uh, if the Vice Chancellor, as you saw, is the one who's wanting to judge that when they come there for it next year.
Well, we've spent five years of KU dollars to... Five years plus it does.
And if you have students, it can extend beyond what are covered in the program to go next year. Look into resources, you know, Garden City Public School Foundation. Go through what we have here at hospital. I don't wanna not allow a student that has resources to go get it.
Um, we finished the zombie run last year, last weekend. Uh, we actually made a little money on it, which we weren't planning on the first year. But that is another thing. We're gonna do it in the fall again. And that's one of the things we're gonna use the money for as a fundraising...
But it was great to go. Other public resources too, because I think that it'd be hard to say no to whatever you're doing. So keep up the good work.
Okay.
I got to end the night at the lab.
You did. I mean, thank you so much for coming.
But it was, there was a lot of booths, a lot of information. And it was pretty cool to see the kids, I saw from junior level, get to interact with the iPad. And some of the videos they were showing you, I mean, this is, I was like, "Slow down, let me see that again." You know, they were moving quick with that iPad. I got to visit all their booths up there. And Tiana, she knew I did it when I stocked them out, but really they called me out on it. You did a great job in your presentation. Now she's only, they arm me with the knowledge to tell my thirteen-year-old and eleven-year-old why they can't have Monster Energy drink. So I appreciate that. You guys did a great job. Um, and next time, if we improve the, uh, the people who, uh, made the Nutri-Green bars, they try to make some kind of a health bar and some drink and that.
Trying to keep it healthy and you know healthy.
Well, he can't push it. He tried the Nutri-Bar, tried the Nutri-Bar.
I don't think Mr. Wallace is gonna... We're gonna throw them chips. Just have the Snickers and go run tight hours.
Thank you, it was great. You guys did awesome.
Thank you for the opportunity. Okay, good. You need to get... Good luck, you guys. Proud of you. Awesome graduation.
If we could move on to the next... Do we have a motion to approve it?
Yeah, President, a motion we approve. The consent is...
There is second?
Second.
Ready discussion? All in favor, consideration... Any votes, same sign? Move on to the curriculum report, migrant summer school.
We have had migrant summer school for a number of years, uh, and it has run a lot like a normal summer school, uh, which involves kids coming to class, they sit in classrooms, they do classroom work. They make up things maybe that they've missed or skills that they've missed during the school year. And, and then they go back to school in the fall. What we found and, and what the research has shown all the way around is that that model of summer school is not particularly effective. Uh, our numbers bear that out. We're gonna do something a little bit different this year. And we were so excited about the opportunity to do it and, uh, what we wanted to do, that we wanted to share with you before we get to summer school, what that was going to look like.
Well, research is pretty clear on two things at work. One thing is if we're giving kids to read in summer, that's gonna close that achievement gap quite a bit. Another thing is the parent involvement. So we wanted to try to add the two together. Plus, we wanted to experiment a little bit in iPads. At the elementary level, we thought this was a great way to start with just a small pilot. So what we're doing is we're using migrant summer school with fifty kids, pre-K through eighth grade. And we would...
It says five, but it should say eight.
Go ahead, bring this log. We're gonna use a product called MyOn Reader from Capstone. And we're going to be able to allow kids to download books onto their iPads. Then we had the issue of how are we going to get more books after they read those if they don't have internet access in their homes? So we thought, we've already got Bob the Bus going around in different areas of town all summer long for two months. Why don't we just put a hotspot on Bob and allow the kids to go in their neighborhoods to download their books from the hotspot? So that's what we'll do. And there is a small cost, a small fee for them to have the insurance for the iPads, which could be problematic for some parents. But, um, Janie's gonna talk a little bit about the parent component.
But before she does that, I just wanna point out that one of the advantage of this program is it's not only the, the literary text, the narratives, the stories, but there's also a lot of nonfiction available for kids to download.
So I get to talk a little bit about the parent component. I have to admit, when, um, this was kind of first brought to me, I was really concerned because I wasn't sure if parents were gonna be able to, um, you know, really understand and also be able to afford that fee for the iPad. Um, but the other thing too, I didn't want, you know, for students to just come in, download books, go home, and then they didn't do anything with it. Right? So, um, once we added the, uh, parent component, what we've done is we've hired two teachers and two, uh, family advocates. So a teacher and a family advocate will be going out to the homes and they will be monitoring the progress of the students on the MyOn reading. They're also gonna be working on some literacy and math activities with the parent and the students. And, uh, and I brought some examples of, of some of the things that they're going to be doing. So not only is this gonna be an ongoing program, you know, throughout the summer to encourage, uh, students to keep reading and to keep those skills up, but it's also going to help the parents so that they have a better understanding of how their children are using an iPad and maybe also not be so afraid of using technology. And, uh, and so I guess that's when I really started really warming up and they know, you know, to the idea of, um, uh, you know, uh, really, uh, using this new approach, if you may. Um, the other thing too is that, you know, we work really hard every year to try to encourage parents to be involved, you know, come to the school, you know, don't be afraid, you know, be a part, a partner with the teachers and, you know, because they are the ones that are really helping their children. And so we need that partnership at home too. So I brought some of the information that we're gonna be using. And, uh, and some of the, a lot of this information we have received through, um, KAPER, which is the Kansas, I'm trying to think of the...
It's all great.
He has this Parent Involvement Resource Center. And, um, Dr. Biggott has been very, very helpful. She has sent us all sorts of materials. The first one that I wanna pass out, kinda, um, this is what we're gonna be giving the parents first time. And, uh, it's both in English and Spanish, so if you've got the Spanish part, you'll see. But it will be translated in the other languages. And it kinda shows, you know, kind of an introduction of how they're going to be using the iPad and this new reading program. Then some of the other things, some of the other resources, um, here's something to hand out. So it's gonna help parents to, you know, how to have that connection with the teacher. Um, and some of the other things that they can learn and be able to teach to their children. And then, um, I also brought you, have a, kind of an example of an activity that's going to be done um, so that the teacher can leave this with the parents. They're gonna go through and read a story. They're going to be doing an hands-on activity. And then, um, the student and, and, um, the children and the parents can do, you know, continue redoing that and through the, throughout the week. And then the next week, they'll get another activity to work on.
The other thing, the kids can be motivated and engaged for ten minutes instead of one. So that, that's a real benefit for us.
The other thing I just wanted to mention too though is that we will be having, um, a summer school program at the high school, but that's going to be for clearly cruel. So, and that one's only gonna be for the month of June.
In terms of data, we will collect data out of this, um, process. The reader itself is an online program and we will be able to track usage and how the kids are doing from that. In addition to that, we will do pre-post surveys. Actually, we'll do surveys with parents, with students, and with the staff involved to measure their, uh, experience with the program. We'll also do, here's where the pre-post comes in, with the testing. And AmesWeb will compare the score at the beginning of the summer and then a score at the end of the summer, beginning of school year, beginning of school year, really, for both AmesWeb and the DRA, at least in the grade levels where we do DRA. So we will have some good data at the end of this to be able to say, yes, this was, this was successful or no, this really didn't work. But we're very excited about the possibilities that this has for us.
And I think one of the things that I really liked was that, I thought, um, Mr. Vesalius did a wonderful job of, you know, really promoting iPads and how they can be used. And it's not just about one thing. Maybe there's a lot of different things that can be done with that. So I thought that was a really good introduction to our program.
This is a little bit different take. Um, and the company, the, the Capstone MyOn company, as well as KAPER, have both expressed interest in following what we're doing and, and keeping tabs on it and hearing back at the end. So there's, there's interest from other places as well.
Um, with the iPad involved in this, they're, you check it out to them at the beginning of summer?
Correct.
And then you collect it at the...
Correct. Correct.
And then home visits, that, that can be pretty intensive, really intensive. You're saying fifty or so?
Fifty kids is what we're looking at.